I think I completed it. I'll put my finger on it. He is French. We all rise. I'm going to rush into the sensors.
Thank you.
Trust me. I'm sure you measure. Each drill is $24,000. Here's the drill.
Yes.
The bill. This is what it needs to be. You do it.
That's 6:30.
Yes, he's running a little bit behind. All right, Lisa, are you good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're on.
All right, folks, I apologize. One of our council members is running a little bit behind, but since we have enough for a quorum, we're going to go ahead and start, and then he'll join us as soon as he gets here. You know the lovely traffic. And he's coming from a little bit ways away. So, the time is now 6:30. Call this meeting to order. First thing will be our invocation. If y'all can bow your heads.
Dear God, we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to serve our citizens in our community, and we ask that you give us wisdom in all the decisions we make on behalf of our citizens in our city, and that you put your hedge of protection over everyone. In your name we pray.
Amen. All right, if y'all will stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and in his.
All right. As I say in every meeting, the rules of decorum are in effect. Before we start the citizens' comment, I'm going to deviate just a tad. I have a section later on in this where the mayor has comments and all that. This is to let you folks know, if you weren't here yesterday, yesterday being Veterans Day, we had a very, very cool ceremony dedicating the bricks that are the base for our memorial that's just out to the right-hand side of the building. It was really neat to see how many veterans' names were out there and how many veterans showed up for that ceremony. It shows that our community is healing and coming back together, and people are coming out for various events, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud of our community. We have a very, very beautiful monument out there, and it's something for us as citizens to be very proud of. Just wanted to say that before we start into everything else. All right, we're going to go into citizens' comments. Mr. Nickel, you're the only one.
I thank you to the council and to you-
Before you start, she's got to have your name and your address just for the record.
Oh, I know. I'm sorry. Gary Nickel, 612 Kentwood. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for your efforts, and I hope you will not mistake the lack of public attendance for disinterest. I think instead, speaking on behalf of those who aren't here without their permission, that you should take that as a sign that we have complete confidence in what you're doing, and we trust you to do the right thing, as we would if we were watching over your shoulder every week. So, that's all I need to say. Just thank you a lot. We do appreciate you all.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Nichols. That is something this council needs to hear more of. Every day, we try to make the right decisions on behalf of everybody. Sometimes, people aren't in agreeance, but to hear a "thank you" or "we trust you guys", it's very well received. Thank you. All right, next thing up, approval of minutes. We have consideration of the approval of the minutes for the October 22 city council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to make a motion to actually table this approval until after the executive session, if I could. I'd like to get some clarification about one thing, and it has to deal with personnel, so I thought it'd be best handled in executive, if that's okay?
You don't have to even make a motion. You can just handle it afterwards.
Okay.
It's all in the agenda, so you can mix it around all you want.
All right, then we will table that until afterwards. First up is going to be item 6.1, Discussion and Action Regarding Consideration of An Ordnance Updating the Fee Schedule to Reflect an Increase in the Monthly Sewer Rate Fee from $55 to $57.75 effective January 1 of 2020. Ms. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Mayor. During the budget process, council was informed that the $55 a month rate was inadequate to support costs to cover expenses. At that time, we entered into an agreement with Dan Jackson, with Will Dan Financial, to perform a wastewater rate analysis, which you received results of about a month ago. Two weeks ago, we had North Texas Municipal Water District here, and they kind of gave you some updates regarding needed infrastructure and some information about what was driving their costs up, which also affect our costs. We had Representative Mary Smith from Rockwall also attend, and she sort of explained-
Yes, ma'am.
-how they have to pass through those costs as well from Rockwall. Dan Jackson is back today, and he is here to answer any more of your questions, but on the agenda for today for action is the rate increase from $55 to $57.75, as indicated appropriate by the rate analysis that was done. Mary Smith provided a little bit of information about that their original estimates were not quite as high as what they thought. Mr. Jackson and I discussed, and we decided that there was not enough difference to really change from that rate model that he completed, and that's actually just going to help us recoup some of our costs from last year. So, rather than deviating from the model that was presented, we're suggesting that you keep with it for now. But Mr. Jackson is here if you have any further questions, but we are asking for action on this, so we can give the public notice that we would like to make this effective January 1.
Is there any questions from council for Mr. Jackson?
I have one, either for Lisa or Mr. Jackson.
Okay. Let me go ahead and let him get up there, just in case he needs to answer it.
Might turn that light, that switch on there, see.
There you go. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Jim.
Well, I've written down how much lower was the rate, because I don't think North Texas provided that at the time, and you say it's negligible for the increase to 57, right? It's basically right there. Can we quantify that is one question, and the second one was, how quickly does this recoup that $36,000 that we've already paid?
I think we lost about 50 this year. We're in the hole about $50,000, so it doesn't quite make up for it, even with that adjustment that they made. So, we're still a little bit lower than where we would like to be, even with this rate increase. As far as quantifying the numbers, I may let Dan-
Yes. I can, off the top of my head, recall what the exact percentage decline was, but one of the advantages of running a nonprofit entity is that if you end up recovering more revenues or your expenses aren't as high as what you thought they would be, you're not, quote, "profiting." All you're doing is gathering revenue that you can use to invest in the city's services and to build up the city's reserve a little bit faster than was anticipated. So, again, with Ms. Paloma and I, when we went over the revised model numbers, we just figured that there's enough uncertainty about North Texas's rates, particularly in the future, that it would be, that we thought it would be best policy for the city just to continue to put the rate adjustment in place. You know that you're going to have future rate adjustments in the coming years, and you might end up building up a little bit to your $500,000 goal of your reserve a little bit faster than you anticipated. If that's the case, you might be able to do some scalebacks of future rate increases, but now's not really the time to do that.
So, my question was, are we going to have to do a rate increase now, then also have to increase it in October?
Probably. In all likelihood, you're going to. Annual rate adjustments are a fact of life for every city in North Texas and every city around the country. North Texas is increasing their-
Just hit the other microphone button. The battery went out on that one.
There you go.
North Texas is increasing their rates every year. Costs are going up. Cost, everything goes up by 3% a year. You're facing a lot of challenges in the future with regards to your growth, and also, you've got something sitting out there in the future, and that is, eventually, some of your development fees are going to go away. And so, you have to slowly start building up your revenue, so that when those development fees go away, you'll be able to replace them without it being too much of a shock to your ratepayers. But unfortunately, annual rate adjustments are a fact of life. The average utility in the United States is raising its rates 5% to 6% every year, and that's just-
There's going to be two rate adjustments in one year.
In 10 months, yes. The plan was, it was too late to try to get something done in October of this year, so January was the next best target date. Then, we had hoped that future rate adjustments would go into place at the beginning of your fiscal year, which would be October 1st. So, yes, it's only 10 months this first year, but it will be 12 months every other year.
Thank you.
Just real fast, I want to concur to the council, kind of to support what Mr. Jackson and Lisa have been saying. We should be making a profit. There is a case out there specifically as to water that cities, it is fine. They are running a business. You're in the water business, so you should be making a profit. You should be taking care of your citizens. How so? Well, kind of like what he's talking about, some of the infrastructure. You've got unexpected costs, you've got unexpected maintenance, you've got unexpected repairs. How are you going to cover it? Well, because you're running a business, and you're making a profit on that business, you're putting in, we call it reserves, and that's fine. There's not any tricky language, but you're going to be repairing that. So, and I understand, wholly understand, the fact we're doing two rate adjustments in 10 and a half months, but we're behind. So, we're not, so we could be in trouble, I don't mean like legally, but I mean, we would be in a bind if something happens and we need X amount of money, which we would have had had we had a different adjustment back then. Just, I want to concur to the council, nothing wrong with making a profit.
And if I might add something real quick, even though this is a five-year study, a five-year model, Dan and I talked a little bit, and because there are so many moving targets out there as far as North Texas and Rockwall and, you know, as far as infrastructure going on and other things that affect this, we might actually have to look at it a little bit more often. So, it's not like we're going to do this and probably not touch it again for five years. We will probably be reviewing it, you know-
Yes.
-at least internally every six months, 12 months, and then we may end up having to call Dan back for another opinion, you know, if we get to next year prior to budget season and something looks very different.
Absolutely.
And forgive me, but I don't remember, how does this rate compare with, for example, other cities such as Fayette or Forney?
You're right about average. Here in Texas, for 7,500 gallons, in our presentation, we did a comparison of rates. You're actually lower than Frisco, Mesquite, Princeton, Roy City, Forney. You're significantly lower than Forney. Forney's almost $80 for the same amount. You're higher than some, but you're lower than others, and that's kind of where you would expect to be. But keep one other thing in mind, 30% to 40% of utilities charge rates that don't cover their costs. So, just because a rate is lower than yours, that might mean that the city has made a management decision to subsidize their water or sewer fund, which they're allowed to do. You can do that if you want. It's not particularly good financial policy, but you can do that. All that being said, you're right about in the middle when it comes to your rates.
And I think another thing to think about is the fact that as Sonoma Verde grows or doesn't grow, water is still going to, the water prices are still going to increase. So, if we have a slowdown in growth in Sonoma Verde, that's going to also affect the sewer rates.
Yes, it will. And conversely, if you grow faster than anticipated, that could benefit your rates in the short term.
Any other questions?
Oh. Can you join us? Sorry for the delay.
You're fine. You're fine. If there's no other questions, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept this, the increase from $55 to $57.75.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the ordinance updating the fee schedule to reflect an increase in the monthly sewer rate from $55 to $57.75 effective January 1, 2020.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Second. All right, any discussion?
I would really like to make sure that we look at it again in October to see if we, if it warrants it.
Yeah, we will, we'll be going into budget, so we'll be looking at it before then.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, show that unanimous? All right. I've got notes on here. Okay. Moving on to 6.2, Discussion and Action Regarding Authorizing the City Administrator to Enter into an Agreement with Hawes and Associates for Street Repair Located at the Intersection of Forensic Court and Bertino Way in the Sonoma Verde Phase 1 subdivision in the Amount of $44,700. Ms. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you. Before I do, guys, you have pictures of this particular item in front of you.
Yes, I'm also putting them up here on the monitor. We've been getting complaints for months about Forensic Court and Bertino Way, the intersection, it was cracked, and then it sunk, and it's, they actually went in, the original developers did a diagnosis, they cut out the piece of concrete, looked at it, diagnosed the problem, and unfortunately, it is not an easy or inexpensive fix. So, what's happened here is that they believe that it was installed correctly, it was installed according to the way it was supposed to be done originally. It all looks like it was installed correctly, but water seepages managed to come underneath that subgrade, and it's caused it to swell, and it's cracked, and it's heaved and cracked. As you can see, the pictures here, they're pretty rough. Now, this is after it was cut up, and so they could kind of diagnose what the problem is, but it is just in such a state that it just is going to have to be completely cut out and replaced, and that cost is going to be $44,700 is what we have. And so, I'm asking that this time, we have a new fund balance policy, as you know, and we reserve those funds for the specific purpose. There is a road maintenance fee that's collected every year from the Sonoma residents, and that, over time, that fund has built to about $98,000, which is not a lot of funds. This is going to wipe out about half of it with this one repair, but at this time, we just don't see another alternative. This would be a complete fix, you know, a complete, cutting it out and replacement. The solution here, if you just want to get into kind of a little bit more specifics here, they would do this in stages to keep the vehicular traffic moving, so that it's not completely stopped. They're going to regrade the subgrade to the proper grade slips and tolerances, install thicker, stronger reinforcing steel and rebar, and also place that closer together than it was originally to compensate for what's added, what's the dampness it's caused of upheaval. They're going to incorporate concrete eight inches thick instead of six inches thick for added strength, and they believe that this would be a repair that will withstand these conditions in the future. I had, because this information was provided to me by the developer's engineer, I also had our city engineer evaluate their findings, and they concur that this would be the appropriate fix. The price here does include a maintenance bond for two years, so we would at least get a warranty for a two-year extended period of time.
That was going to be my question.
Hopefully, within two years, we would notice any defects, and we could get them corrected. Of course, in this particular case, they didn't appear for those first two years. We were more in a dry state, so it was difficult to see the results of this.
Two years is pretty good for maintenance bond. A lot of times, it's only a year. Now, with a lot of work too, though, usually, if it's a really bad job, they'll show up in two years. It should not, you shouldn't have any problem, no heaving, no spalling, no crack, and nothing like that for a good six to eight years with what they're doing. But it should in a two-year time period, that's what I always try to push for, is get two years. That's actually pretty good. That makes me feel better, too, if they're willing to do a two-year maintenance bond.
So, this is on for action tonight. We are requesting that we be, to use those funds of $44,700. We would not pay for it until the job is complete, and we would also have our city engineer go and inspect the work to make sure that it is, it was done as it was supposed to be.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like, yeah, a question.
Yes.
Go ahead for the questions.
One, how did we, did we get bids or go through a process before we selected Hawes and Associates?
No, not officially. I had, well, their developer went out and asked for pricing. Part of it is availability. There are not a lot of them that are standing in line, ready to go. A lot of them don't take these smaller jobs anyway, but this one is available. But they told me that this particular company, they did not do the original work, but said that they consistently offer lower prices, price points than others, so they were pretty pleased with the pricing. I also had our city engineer check, and he said that that was a pretty inexpensive price for the work. If it's under $50,000, we don't have to go out to bid, and we kind of feel like it's fairly urgent that we get this done, so we were kind of, not that I would want to spend a lot more money in the forsaken time, but I do kind of want to get this attended to as quickly as we can. I feel like it's a reasonable price.
How long is this road?
How old is it?
Yes, sir.
At least four years. I've been there three, three and a half, so it's been there probably four to five.
It's phase one, so it would have been there before any of the other houses were there, so.
I would probably say somewhere around five.
And the only other question I have is that the plan to fix it seems to address everything except the overseen surface entrance, possible spring, or something like that. Is there anything else we can do to protect us from this happening again?
Well, they think that it's swelled as much as it's going to, so if this new fix kind of accounts for that wetness, that it's going to remain, it's going to at least be wet at least part of the year, so they think that this will compensate for that. So, the extra rebar, being close together, and the extra thickness, they think that that will do it. You know, it's possible that rain stops tomorrow, and we don't get any for two years, and we don't identify a problem, you know, and then all of a sudden, it shows up again. Anything is possible, but I'm hoping that, you know, with the weather kind of trending the way it is, that if something's going to happen, we'll get some wet weather this weather, this winter, this spring, and something will show up, if it's going to show up.
Is there any way we can make it to where the trucks can go over it, so it won't be damaged as quickly? I mean-
Well, they don't think this damage was caused by the trucks. There may be other places where they run over curbs and some other things that have been cracked. I do intend to have a conversation with them about going in an alternate route, if possible, but for this particular piece, we don't think that's what's caused this damage.
I would just, you know, just to kind of keep it the best we can, just make them go somewhere else.
I can certainly have that discussion.
Well, that's-
It's just a more tender area.
I know where you're going with that, and that is, that is going to probably become an agenda item for another council meeting.
That's good. That's good.
Based on the fact that, as we take ownership of those roads, construction doesn't stop. There's still additional phases. We're in, what, phase two right now?
Yes.
You know, and there's-
But there's a different way they can go. Let's ask them to go that way instead of that way, the most that they can.
Well, there's several ideas in that, but that will have to become its own agenda item.
Right, that's good, because they can't mix out some ways right now.
Lisa, what was our original warranty on that road from the developer?
Two years.
Yeah, and it passed. It passed.
I noticed that in their stack report, we talked about that the developer has paid for repairs beyond the warranty period, but this time, they don't want, they don't want to. Did they put that to you in writing? Do you have?
I'm sure I have it in an email somewhere, or it could have been a phone conversation. I know that they have made minor repairs, and it's not passed through the city. I know that there's been, you know, a hole here and there, a crack here and there, some surface replacement.
Right.
This one was costly enough that they feel like they just can't cover it.
I think it'd be good if we for sure had it in writing, so we would use that as our, you know, continued justification in historical background.
That they have paid for it.
But they have formally said they will not pay, they will not-
Well, if it's out of warranty, if they've already put it in place, and it's out of warranty, I mean, we can't hold them accountable for something that's already passed the warranty. It'd be like owning a car and going back to the dealership, going, it may be out of warranty, but it broke again.
It's possible that I have in correspondence, back and forth, or maybe, I know I have had phone conversation with them. I may have it in an email, too. I just have to go back and look.
And who is that? Which developer?
Russell Phillips.
Is there anything that there is within Sonoma Verde are showing these kinds of issues?
Not like this. Not like this.
Not to that degree.
We have a cracked curb here and there and some other things, and honestly, I don't know that I would want to repair those until after the construction is done. I think maybe they need to go through after and-
That's why I'm saying, some of those questions will probably be answered or addressed in a future agenda.
I had asked the developer if he could attend this evening, and unfortunately, he's out of town, and their engineer had another commitment in the city of heat, so neither one were available to come tonight. I know we're not going to have another meeting for a month, which is why this got a little bit of an urgency to it, so we can kind of get this on the repair list, hopefully get it done.
How much of this are they going to repair? Because if there is an issue even further out, will it, the rest of it fall, this one just going to stick up? You know what I'm saying?
I'm not sure I'm following you. They're going to replace the whole intersection.
The whole intersection.
Where, yeah, where this is at, yeah, there's, I mean, don't hold me to measurements, but it's probably a 25, 30 foot by whatever width of the street area that they're going to be repairing.
So, it's not like just a part of the street.
Yeah, they're going to repair that whole corner section, is how we want to decide.
They're going to have to saw cut that out, all of it out.
The center of the intersection, whatever crosswalk.
Yes.
Or incident.
Yes. There's no other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Hawes and Associates for Street Repair Located at the intersection of Forensic Court and Bertino Way in the Sonoma Verde Phase 1 subdivision in the amount of $44,700.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. If there, is there any discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, show that unanimous?
Thank you.
All right. All right, before we, can we go ahead and do 6.4 before we go into 6.3? Because 6.3 is going to need to go into executive session.
What was it?
6.4, about-
Can they just skip over 6.3?
Yeah, move to one and, okay. We're going to skip over 6.3 for the moment and get to 6.4, Discussion and Consideration Regarding Review of the Current Contract with Community Waste Disposal for Solid Waste Removal and Recycling Services Related to Certs Complaints and Billing Issues. Ms. Kipit put this on here, before we get into this one, you know, we've, over the whole term, for over the whole time of this contract, we've all, as council members, heard complaints to citizens about timely pickup or lack of pickup and various issues. I will tell you, recently, I've had the same issue with them, not on the trash service side, but on the recycle side. And speaking as a customer and not the mayor, as a customer of them, I don't feel I should have to call them if their people are missing a pickup. You know, I understand we tell our city administrator, you know, people to call the city and let them know. If their people didn't pick it up, they should know their people didn't pick it up. You know, whether it's they missed a street, or they had a breakdown, I get that there's things that happen, but if we're having to tell them, hey, your people aren't picking up, it's one thing to say, hey, they love trash in the street. I kind of have a little issue with the way things are happening with them right now. Ms. Kipit, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, I've been summarizing, basically, what I've heard through citizen comments, be it, you know, email, phone call, office hours, whatever. First off, the erratic schedule, seven to seven, but frequently, trash has been picked up after, recycled primarily after seven, or if not at all. Billing omissions and inconsistencies. Some customers have yet to receive the bill. Some customers get a late notice before they even have their first bill. There's been repeated comments of the drivers dumping trash and recycling in the same truck, and just from that standpoint. And then I also just wanted to ask Lisa if they have been meeting their requirements to you, such as giving you the monthly cycling, recycling report, things like that. I've looked through their contract. Again, I'm not the attorney, but I just wanted to make sure that they are meeting the requirements of their contract from our standpoint.
I do get a monthly report with some statistics on it. I'm happy to pass those along to you if you'd like them.
I just want to make sure that they're reading their, of the bargain as well. And then I also saw that we're pretty much victim to their fee schedule for- And then I also saw that we're, we're pretty much victim to their fee schedule for the next four years. They get to determine what the fee is, and I think we're at their mercy on that.
And that, that's coming out too?
Mm-hmm.
The CPI index adjustment is coming up.
Right.
Well, yes, I'm, I'm going to ask something. In council, let me know if you're in agreements, but I think we're at a point with enough citizens having concerns about the way their trash service has been done so far for the term of this contract, that I think it's in our best interest as a city to review the contract and, and between Lisa and/or the city attorney, what, what our options are because of the fact that we're getting so many complaints. Because I, I for one, not only from being a good steward of my own personal finances, but we're, we're in charge of making sure that we provide a good trash service for our citizens, and that's their money being spent using this company. As if this company can just raise the rates at what they feel is right and hold us accountable, or hold us at mercy to, to raise those rates. If our citizens aren't happy right now, maybe we need to relook at that. Do you guys agree?
Yes, sir.
So, yes, sir, go ahead.
Under the current contract, item four A under residential collection, it shows, it shows that the company shall provide sufficient vehicles and employees to provide curbside collection service for the collection of residential refuse. To this day, my knowledge, we still have not received full collection services by this company to all our residents.
Well, then, do we want to give direction to, to the city administrator to review that contract and between her and the city attorney, see what our options are? Are we good with that?
Very good with that.
Okay. Ms. Lisa? I may not have it worded quite eloquently, but I think that you understand what...
So you, you want Mr. Hall and I to review and to bring back to you in a future meeting?
If you could, the next one, if that's enough time, being a month away?
I, I will, and, and there is some, but it's, it's been a while.
Yes, sir.
And I don't, I guess it was your previous city attorney that drafted it, I don't know, in unity with, with their attorneys. The, probably the biggest issue I have with it is the term. It's, it happens a lot. It, from a very strict municipal legal standpoint, it's, in, in my opinion validates the contract after year one. Okay, you're asking me, why is that? Article seven, article five of the Texas Constitution. So cities are allowed to create debt. There's nothing wrong with creating debt, okay? Or a debt obligation, the legal phrase is a debt obligation. But the law is very, very, very clear. People get mad at me about it all the time. I'm going to look, and I'm going to tell you what the law is. And the only thing you can do, and in a contract, there's a Texas Supreme Court case, I'll just flat tell you, it's just, it's easy. A contract is a debt obligation. Boom, where they, that's a given. Even a judge that don't, doesn't know much about municipal law, which is a very real concern, any time I step into the courtroom, you have to educate the ju, literally just about every time, you have to educate the judge. This is a very nuanced area of law, there's not a whole lot of case law there. So Texas Supreme Court is very, very clear, debt obligate, contract, debt obligation. So we're there. So when you have debt obligation, what can you do about it with the city? Well, law is clear, there's only two ways that you can handle that. It's a pledge without anything else, it's a pledge out of the current revenue for the coming year and nothing else. Well, that makes sense, we do a budget every year, right? We don't, do we ever do a two-year budget? No. What about a five-year budget? No. We do a one-year budget, a fiscal year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, for example. So you're pledging, that's why every contract, I tell people, well, do people have a five-year contract? And they actually sound like that. Oh, what about ten-year contract? Well, they don't really. They do, they have a series of five-year or ten-year contracts. What they can do is, there's a clause in their term, they don't say something, the way I draft them, something to the effect of no later than sixty days prior to the end of the each-year term, the council, the government, can make the decision to terminate the contract. They don't have to. So what the law says is, if the city council doesn't decide to terminate the contract, that non-action is looked at affirmatively as a positive decision to pledge the next year's revenues for that contract. Well, there's a second option, and every once in a while you get these. You can have a three-year, five-year, four-year, whatever-year contract if you establish a sinking fund of at least two percent to cover that contract. So if we figure, hey, this contractor is going to cost us fifty thousand dollars over the next five, I'm throwing that number out there because it's up in the law school, it's a math, so simple math. Ten thousand dollars a year for five years, six thousand dollars. We set up a, a whole new account, we budget, we budget for that, set that account up, it's a sinking fund, it's got at least two percent interest, boom, we let it ride for five years, we're good. We're good. In fact, we really don't, other than that fund being part of the budget, we don't really have to ever deal with it as part of the budget. So those are the only two ways. Again, there's a lot in there to get a judge to sit and listen to, okay? A, a lot of times you've got trial judges that are really busy. Some of them, quite frankly, don't know the law and are not interested. So it's a, it's a crapshoot, you're going to get, but that, to me, that's very problematic from a constitutional standpoint, in my opinion. So I do remember that from there. Now, if they're not doing, for example, what Councilmember Doll said, we'll, if we, if we decide to terminate the contract, we notify them, say, hey, look, we terminated the contract because you've breached, there's still a curative provision. So if they can, within, I think it's a thirty days, a thirty-day curative? You can make a, I think it's a thirty day, not that Lisa should not know, I just, she's very smart, I thought maybe even not. So a lot of times in thirty days, if they can get those things addressed, and that's a basic tenet of contract law, is a cure time. Because it's a real hassle to terminate a contract, try and put everybody back the way they were before, who pays what, all of that. So if you can fix the problem that you're having, within thirty days, forty-five days, sixty days, whatever the contract says, it's treated as no breach and you keep moving forward with the contract. Now, if they can't, or they continue with too many breaches, let's say they fix it and we had to do that four times in a six-month period, okay? Now we're being ridiculous, we terminate the contract. If they sue us for breach, then we're looking at having to basically prove, although they have to prove that we breached, we got to basically prove that we were justified in review. So it's an excused breach in other words. So that's a fact issue. Whether or not you, you breach or not, that's going to be, or we breach or not, when they say it, jury's going to have to decide that. Then the jury will also get, did the city of McLennan breach the contract? Yes or no? Then we say, hey, look, we were justified. This is four times we had to get them to cure the same thing in a six-month period. We've got people we have to answer to, we have constituents, they're, they're not getting the, no recycling ban, it's a hassle. You know, we don't like hearing the trucks, we don't like hearing the trucks at seven forty-seven at night. So we have to then more or less go on the offensive and show why we, because it's affirmative defense, that we have to prove that we were justified in essence and excused with our breach to the jury. But another question, was it breached by the city of McLennan, Chisholm, excuse? They'll be deciding. So there's a lot in this. Now, they may decide that, you know what, it's just not worth it, you know, and that, that there, it's real difficult to sit and make a, a estimation of what could happen or will happen because there's so many factors. There are so many times that practical considerations, not legal, make a choice on how a city handles it. People think that cities are, well, they're taking off a bunch of lawsuits, they must be liable. Not necessarily. I, I remember when, early on, I represented a bunch of, of bigger cities, when I worked in a firm, ten, twelve years ago or whatever, back, that firm that used to represent McLennan-Chisholm. We had several times, officers would come up and it's police brutality on that, city wasn't liable, there was no, sorry, immunity, that they were immune, maybe they went a little excessive in, in their views, but they weren't, Mayor hit this better than most, but that's not liable. City paid it off, why? Everybody's got to be quiet, nobody can talk about it, they're giving you basically hush money. Bad public image, don't want it together. There's nothing legal about that. That was all a political, and there's nothing to be stressed, there's nothing wrong with that. But it was very political and very practical in why they, why they did the decisions that they did. So there's, there are strategic reasons to do that, practical reasons to do that, as well as legal. So I just want to, and I'm throwing a lot at y'all, and I know, so y'all feel free to talk to me anytime you want to, but this is, it is a big decision. But any time you're thinking about ending a contract, it should be a big decision. We're, we're kind of, you know, stuck with what we've got here, you know, we, we really didn't do this, but we're stuck with this, we'll, you know, make the best that we can. Because I, I don't think they're really going to want to go, oh, that's fine, just go, we'll, you know, we'll, no, they got to decide, they got to cure. So that gives us an excuse right there if they don't cure within the thirty days or forty-five days or whatever. So they got to decide, dang it, and these people are wearing us out, I don't know if it's worth it to do what it is.
But you're, you'll be looking through to determine the validity and legality of the contract and to see where that...
Well, I mean, except for that provision that concerns me, it's, it's, it seems to be, I, I'm not saying it's a good contract, I'm not saying I would recommend it to my client, again, two different things, but as far as, does it meet the elements of a contract? Is there an offer? Is there acceptance? Is there delivery of that? Is there consideration? I mean, those are the, those are the five elements of what a contract is, and it does appear to have those five elements. So I would say it does appear to be a contract. Again, term, that concerns me. I don't think it's, it's valid after year one because it doesn't have any provisions in there to let us get out of it. And as far as I know, when I have to go look, as far as I know, the previous city council didn't set up a sinking fund of at least two percent to cover whatever would be at stake in that contract. So that, that's, to me, that's a big bullet. Again, practical consideration there is, I don't want a judge to sit and look and go, you never know, I mean, it could be an A and M rep. I mean, it's really, it's a really difficult, it's a really difficult thing to, to, to figure out. So there's, again, legal, practical considerations, you know, lots of stuff. I mean, we hope he's an A and M rep, because that'd be really, really good.
He was a, sure, so we appreciate the show.
You mean they actually regret it?
Oh, big, big A and M, big A and M. They're great people, they're great. Fine institution, fine institution.
So do we know who, what, who does Heath have as their trash? I don't know.
We, we, I don't know, there's so many different...
Okay, but the reason I'm asking is because if they're having the same problems, we, I mean, like, can we ask out, I know, I think, I'm pretty sure Horni has the same at CWD. I mean, I'm just kind of curious to know if they're having problems too, or if we're the only ones, you know?
You can certainly, even if it's a bid that's over fifty thousand dollars, we have to put it out to bid, there's nothing wrong with notifying, you know, certain vendors that, hey, we're, we're putting this out for a bid. That, there's nothing illegal, there's nothing illegal about that, as long as you follow your bidding process, as long as you follow, you know, two seventy-one, it lays out what we need to do for bids and things like that. We're, we're, our two fifty, excuse me, we're, we're, we're fine on that. So you, you're, we're free to, free to do that. I would encourage you to sit down, maybe the mayor and Lisa sit down with a representative from, let them know what the concerns are. I, I, I think now that's practical, but it's got a very, very legal thrust behind it, and a jury hears the fact that we sat down with them, tried to negotiate, tried to figure things out, tried to work things out, that carries a lot of weight, that they just go, well, I don't know these problems, well, that is, they didn't give a chance, they didn't give a chance to do anything. That's, so from that standpoint, I, I don't think it would be a bad idea for the mayor and Lisa to sit down with some of their representatives. And again, they, I, I always, doesn't matter what the situation, I always encourage the parties to talk first. It may be a five-minute conversation, people may be leave, maybe leaving, flipping each other off, cussing each other, that's fine. That, that's going to give me a lot of information. And the most important thing it does, in my estimation, you get an insight into the mindset of the people on the other side. Never, never in life pass up an opportunity to get into the mind of the people that are on the other side, to learn how they think, what's important to them, anything, that's going to give an advantage. So there's just, to me, there's no downside.
It would be beneficial if, we are coordinating that meeting, it'd be beneficial for Councilman Kipit to be there. It sounds like she's, I mean, I've heard a couple of complaints, but, I mean, if you have, I mean, a problem list, present to them and say, hey, we got eight residents that have had this issue, we have twelve, you know, residents that have had this issue, et cetera, et cetera.
I never have any problem, any council members being in any meeting, as long as it's just not more than two.
Correct.
Because that's a four, yeah, that, that's fine. If you, if Councilman Kipit wants to be there, Lisa, the mayor, the three of them, that, absolutely fine.
Lisa, Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, the week of Thanksgiving. I'm open on any of those three days.
Preferably not Friday.
Well, I'm good with any of those three days. Tuesday, I have commitments, midweek for the rest of the autumn, unless it was late on Tuesday.
I have out-of-town guests on Tuesday, but I can meet on Wednesday, I just can't meet Friday.
Monday or Wednesday then.
Okay.
I'm open at whatever time's convenient for you.
And at this time, you want me to invite a CWD rep, or do you want us to talk first?
You could invite the CWD rep, meet with them like thirty minutes, forty minutes before, and then have them show up for that. So you, you...
And you don't have a contract every, every day, five days?
Sure, what, when, what date is that?
Thanksgiving week, twenty-five or twenty-seven.
Two, oh, yeah, I can do it, I can do it next week, yeah, it's not a problem.
See what I can arrange and I'll let the...
Yeah, just let me know what, what you, when you need me here.
I had some questions and comments, but I'll just submit those to the mayor and Lisa and Mr. Hall, just to discuss, and you as well.
In fact, it might help me a, a great deal if Mr. Hall doesn't object if individually, not copying one another, but individually sending me your complaints. And I don't mean about every address, but in general, sure, what the bigger complaints are.
That's fine, just make sure it doesn't end up being, you know, hey, Mayor Portim, what were your complaints? You know, hey, Councilman Hodges, what were your, the council forgot.
Can't have any issues.
That, yeah.
I just, I just want to make sure we have a, a fairly complete list so we can address as much as we can.
Yes.
All right, so we're clear on that one, so that one's done. We've got three different executive session items. Can we go back there and address them one at a time back there, or do we need to come back after each one?
My recommendation is just to read them, is just to say, hey, look, we're going under seven point one, under five five one oh seven four one, seven point two, under five five one oh seven two, seven point three, under five five one oh seven. All you have to do is announce the item and the provision of while you're going into executive session.
Fair enough.
Do you want to do six point five before you do that?
Um, well, I was thinking we probably need to talk about seven three before we do that. So at this point in time, it is seven seventeen, we're going to enter into an executive session on seven point one, which falls under Texas Government Code, section five five one point oh seven four. We'll also cover seven point two, which falls under five five one point zero seven one, and then seven point three, which falls under Texas Government Code, five five one point oh seven one as well. So at this time, it is seven seventeen, seven eighteen, we're recessing into executive session. Counsel, if you could...
We, we have, we have...
Yeah, my dad's here.
Oh, you're a dad, you're...
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Auditors have things in there, so, yeah. We could go back to one.
Ah, we can, we can...
Mayor?
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 Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Who said that?
No, I didn't.
Oh, I thought Nathan said, I'm like, dude, what?
Just about the one.
I got it now.
I'll go out there and get a...
I'll go out there and get a Dixie cup and tap water for him if he's making that coffee. Here, drink it and be happy. Well, I was going to fill it with water.
We're good, man.
All right, you ready? Okay. It is 8:34, we are back from executive session. Let me go back to these. On executive session 7.1, I'll entertain a motion on the employee evaluation of the city administrators on the.
Sorry?
What's the wording?
Okay. Or is it 7.1?
Yes.
Um. Uh, please, see. I said, see.
Yeah, I think so. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to proceed with the personnel matters delivered to the, to the, kind of, whoever's trying to.
Is it 7.1?
Yes, executive session 7.1.
To personal matters delivered to the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, dismissal of public culture, employee, city administrator, city secretary, assistant to the city secretary, building permit to mission, fire chief, fire marshal, assistant fire chief and firefighters. Basically to approve the city administrators' pay adjustment according to our budget for 19, 2019, 2020.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion, I've got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous?
Thank you.
All righty. And under 7.3, there is no action on 7.2, that will reflect back to, there's no action on that. We are done with the executive session items. We will move back to 5.1, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October 22nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the October 22nd, 2019 city council meeting as written.
All right, do I have a second? Second. All right, I've got a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Now we will move on to 6.3, discussion and action regarding authorizing the city administrator to enter into negotiations with Mohammed, is it Palani? Representing MFS Group LLC for a pro-rata performance agreement for a wastewater line. I'll entertain a motion to, or we can give direction to Lisa to, to enter into negotiations.
You didn't even take a vote or motion.
We don't?
Just direct to do it, yeah. You're doing that, you'll vote on one of the agreements.
Okay. Well, Lisa, go ahead and enter into negotiations on that.
Sure.
All right. I think we have covered all of our items. Now we will go down to updates, discussion, and direction of staff, including future addenda items.
Oops, we didn't do 6.5 yet.
What was 6.5? Oh, I'm, yes, I'm sorry. Discussion and action regarding the upcoming Christmas tree lighting event, including event data, or excuse me, event date, program details, and estimated costs. Lisa?
I was just worried that we had only budgeted about $500 for this, this year, the present budget year for special events. So I was just trying to get a little bit of clarity, and I'd asked Ms. Councilmember Westner if she would kind of go over briefly what the estimated costs were being. I think she and I have talked since then, and I think we're going to be within budget, but I was just looking at the time I did the agenda for some clarification on that.
Do you have anything? Trudy?
Um, no, I think we're good.
Okay. All right, then I would say proceed as, proceed forward with it.
So for the minutes, what is the date, time and all?
Oh, yeah, we do need the date, but she can go through that during the event if, if you want to, or she can tell you now.
It's December 1st, from 5:30 to 7:30.
Okay.
Actually, that's a, and there are already signs up. I will put it on, I'll give Lisa some more information to put on the website when I get, we had a meeting today, so kind of got more information. So once I get that finalized on what we're doing, then I'll give Lisa more information on exactly what's going to go on, and then more detail will come out.
Now, you want a lot of the public here, so you don't want me singing Christmas carols, right?
Okay, well, Lisa, we're going to have to scrap the whole thing.
I mean, I could try, but.
Well, your daughter had you up there doing everything, so.
Okay. I guess I better start practicing my eldest impersonation.
There you go.
All right, so we've covered that. Now, if I didn't miss anything else, update, discussion, directions. Any updates for Lisa on anything that we need to do?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
As far as the brick campaign, we have about 130-some dollars left in the account, which we'll just roll over for when we do the next installation of bricks. Would it be appropriate to go ahead and disband the committee, or do I need to keep the committee active? There, I have no need for the committee. I just plan to do the brick orders as I did this time as well, and I don't, but I, I didn't know if I needed formally to be on the committee, or keep it going. Name only.
Here's, here's what I would say to that right now. Even though we, you may not have any scheduled meetings until we get the rest of the bricks put in, and I, I know I had expressed an idea of possible lighting for it and all that.
Yeah.
You might want to hold off until we, till we get close to the second one, because if, if we decide to do some sort of inexpensive solar lighting or anything like that, that may need to be something that's discussed. Do you agree, or do you really even think it needs to?
I don't, I don't feel strongly either way.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt to just keep it in place and just know that we probably won't have any meetings upcoming for some time. And if you, do you want to have an expense, or change something, or add something, it's there if you want to pull your folks together for a meeting in the future. It's kind of up to you all how you want to handle it. I don't know that there's a hard and fast way to do it.
What would you like to do?
I would just go ahead, I would think it'd be okay to go ahead and disband it.
Okay. I'm, I'm good either way. If you don't see an issue with it, Michael?
No, because you just want to, you want to use it for the same thing, it's just a little to maintain.
Financially, there are no issues if you wanted to spend it.
Okay, so I will submit a final report to you as far as everything goes, and so you'll have that for our records.
As an ad hoc committee, Mr. Hall, do we need to take any action by resolution to end it, or do we just stop?
I mean, usually we get, we'll check the records, it's usually that's how, you know, it'll lay out what we need to do to.
To stop?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look at that and see if there was anything that we need to do to end it.
I was looking at a couple of things today, and one thing I'd like to see if we can, we can do that is, I know before you used to be able to click on the calendar and it would bring the calendar up and tell us when our city council meetings were. I think it was blank for this month or next month. Can we just check that and see if those are on there?
Oh, sure. I'm just probably behind.
Okay. Just to make sure they're on there, because I don't want citizens complaining. I know that we did everything right, but I did have somebody come to me and say that they specifically said that the city didn't do enough to get the information out there that we were the voting location. That it was not well advertised by the city, and I don't necessarily agree with that statement, but it was brought to my attention when I came to vote.
I, I was out of town when the day the voting happened, but I, I heard that too.
Yeah.
We posted it on the door, and we had a link on our website to the county location.
Yes.
But in the future, perhaps, we'll just put a direct, you know, something on there that's, just make it simple, just make it very clear.
But I know somebody had, somebody saw me when I came to vote and go, well, you're the man, so.
Yeah, no problem, we can work on that for the future, for sure.
And then I think that's it. Guys, I, I know in the past there's been questions about not getting the agenda items quick enough for you to, to read through them and develop questions and digest them before you come to meetings. I'm going to ask you all, if you can, get them to her a lot quicker, if we can. I've got some ideas that I'm running around in my head of how we might be able to do things in the future to where maybe, depending on how big the item is, we put it on an agenda for, let's say hypothetically, the first meeting in December to talk about it, but no action would happen until a second meeting or the next scheduled, to give you guys an opportunity. But it might have to be on a case-by-case, depending on how quickly we can get information in.
Okay.
Because some stuff is time-sensitive. But, but it's a thought for future things. Now, just remember, we only have one more council meeting for this year, being the first one in December. So if you have things that you think need to be covered before the end of the year, let's try to get them to her within the next week if we cancel. She's got time, because we all are going to get very busy during Thanksgiving, then we're going to have the Christmas tree lighting, then we're going to have an agenda, a city council meeting, so the sooner the better. It helps everybody. Other than that, I don't have anything else there. As far as reports, guys, MC50 was a huge hit. I had all kinds of people coming up to me telling me what a blast it was.
Good.
Trudy, my hat's off to you, you did an awesome job. I, I will give you kudos on one big thing on there, that the city of Roy City wants to steal your idea of a frozen t-shirt contest.
I had more people go, all right, so tell me how you did that.
Yes.
I said, well, this is, there's different ways, but this is my.
They, they laughed that I was not capable of breaking my shirt to get it apart and get it open, but they thought it was such a cool idea, they want to, they want to know that they can steal that to use for one of their events next year, because they thought it was so neat. Yes.
Oh, yeah, it was funny to watch them, because at first they're like, eh, I got this.
You know, the next time we have one, Judd Sweet can't participate because he's not going to beat me like that.
Yeah, he barely beat.
Yes. Now, yesterday's veterans ceremony was huge. We had a ton of veterans here. It was very, very well-received in the community. People really, really enjoyed it, even with our Typhoon Gale winds and the sideways rain, it still went over very well. We were very blessed that Senator Hall took time out of his schedule to be here with us. The county judge was here with us, county commissioners were here. We, we had a lot of people that showed interest in our city, and it was, it was huge. I, I actually fell for it at one point, because when it comes to this time of the year, with Marine Corps birthday being on the 10th and Veterans Day being on the 11th, and I'm getting older, things are starting to really play in my mind, and I got a little choked up, you know, to, to walk out there and see my name on a brick, and I don't think I'm an old guy. It, it really choked me up. To see my dad's, I was beaming with pride. I didn't let him know that I'd forgotten the whole process that, you know, in the next order of bricks that my grandfather needs to be on there, because he was a Pearl Harbor survivor.
Yeah.
But my father-in-law's name is out there. I will tell you, I received a personal phone call from Herman Larkin when I sent him a picture of his brick. He was so thrilled and wanted to tell each and every one of you, thank you for all the hard work you put into it, because it turned out fabulous. You know, he took the time to call me, he was so excited. You know, people are just thrilled.
Lorna, thank you for all your work.
Yeah, Lorna, it's, it's beautiful.
Yes.
You're taking a really good job.
You know, and, you know, it, it hit home. It hit home because, you know, Mindy Lovell started this whole thing with the Daughters of the American Revolution getting that huge monument out there. And, you know, it's like I said yesterday, and apparently Blue Ribbon News, you know, took what I said and quoted it in their thing that, you know, between Mr. Packard and the Lovells, they, they have a servants' hall, willing to do the things they've done for our city, and, you know, I got choked up because, you know, I'm a Beirut-era Marine, and I lost friends in Beirut. One of them was 19, and he's buried in Fort Worth. You know, my name gets to sit on a brick. He is, he couldn't be here if there was a brick with his name on it, because of his service. And, and it, it hit me hard yesterday to know that, that, you know, they honored us by doing all this, and then to see my name out there, it was huge. It was huge. You know, we have a city to be proud of, and our citizens, several of them yesterday, were so proud of what we did yesterday, and came up and expressed to me what an awesome thing it was. Every one of you need to be able to pat yourselves on the back and go, you know what, good job.
I look forward to the new residents that come in, you know, that, that will be coming in, and they're going to have people, you know, and relatives and friends, and they'll be able to add to that. And, I mean, that's amazing, to be able to come to a new town and, and already make your mark, you know, already saying that you're part of this town, or this city.
Well, and.
And I think that's awesome.
Somebody actually brought an idea to me yesterday concerning all of that, and said, you know what, it is a beautiful monument, and it is a beautiful memorial to all the veterans. And he goes, there's one thing that I'd like to see out there somewhere, near it, is something to signify the POWs and AMIRs.
I was going to say.
And you know what, when he said that, it was like, you know what, you're right. But so many people saw it and fell in love with it. It is something to be proud of.
Well, I think it looks very nice, very nice job.
Well, and Mr. Packard donated another 500 bricks, so that when we have to extract these bricks, we'll be able to get, get the, put the other ones in place, so we've got plenty of room to grow.
Absolutely. Jim, do you have anything?
No, oops.
Um, Lorna?
Nothing.
Yes, sir. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving.
Trudy?
Um, I was going to do a MC50 recap.
Go ahead.
Just a real quick one. Um, we, we had a wonderful turnout, as you guys know, and we had about, I would say, 200 people.
That's something about.
Yeah, somewhere in there. We had cake and ice cream, you know, a 60-foot blow-up obstacle course, games, a new Christmas tree planting, vintage tractors, marmannels, master gardener, and a very popular frozen t-shirt contest, which was a close race with Matt Higginbotham being the winner, Nathan Hodges as being second, and David Sweet came in.
A close second.
I know.
Very close.
Sensitive.
I know. Still, still a little wounded.
But he was, his arms were as big as my legs, so it's like.
I'm surprised he got the shirt on.
Yeah.
Yeah. We had a wonderful video that, that showed the beginning of McLean and Chisholm, where we are now and where we are wanting to go. We received enough sponsorship funds to support the MC50 and not need to use any city funds, which I felt was a huge thing.
Awesome.
Absolutely huge. And I just wanted to say that, you know, it was thank you for everyone that came out and enjoyed the celebration in the community. I'd like to also thank everyone that had a hand in making MC50 a success, and Mayor, because you asked me to head up MC50, I thank you too. This event gave me the opportunity to meet some of the most wonderful people here in McLean and Chisholm, and I don't think that I would have ever been able to meet them had it not been for this event. So I feel very blessed that I got to do this event, and I'm very happy. So I appreciate that, thank you. I, I think I gained a bunch of, you know, really, literally family members. I mean, these people, like I told them, I said, you know, I feel like I could ask you for recipes, I feel like I could, you know, go outside and, you know, have a game of something in the backyard with you, and, you know, just every one of them, you have something special with them, and.
Because that's what's.
And that's, it is, it is amazing how I'm missing that, you know, from my own family not being here. I don't have family, so you pick up those that, and the people that I actually got to help me with this, I feel really close to them, and I think that's, and they're like, yeah, we'll do whatever you want next time. So I'm like, I mean, it's just nice. It's just nice that people care that much about this place.
Well, that is what the true meaning of community is.
But I thank you for allowing me to do this, and so I feel blessed. gave me the opportunity to meet some of the most wonderful people here in McClendon Chisholm. And I don't think that I would have ever been able to meet them had it not been for this event. So I feel very blessed that I got to do this event, and I'm very happy. So I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I think I gained a bunch of, you know, really, literally family members. I mean, these people, it's like I told them, I said, you know, I feel like I could ask you for recipes. I feel like I could, you know, go outside and, you know, have a game of something in the backyard with you. And, you know, just every one of them, you have something special with them. And
Because that's what the
And that's, it is, it is amazing how I'm missing that, you know, from my own family not being here. I don't have family, so you pick up those that, and the people that I actually got to help me with this, I feel really close to them. And I think that's, and they're like, yeah, we'll do whatever you want next time. So I'm like, I mean, it's just nuts. It's just nice that people care that much about this place.
Well, that is what the true meaning of community is.
But I thank you for, for allowing me to do this. And so I feel blessed.
And, you know, just to side note with that, is, as well as we did on the 50th celebration, maybe we can take that and it become a yearly event.
Well, I'd like to do a Fall Fest 2020.
Yeah.
So we'll have to see on what we're doing on cash, but, but we'll, we'll plan it. We'll think about it. And, but I would seriously do, and I think I'd like to do it bigger and better, but I, because I have more time
Sure.
than just what I did have. But I've got a lot of plans already in place and got people already working on things. So
Nice.
I know that sounds crazy, but it comes and goes quick. I'm like, holy crud. So, yeah. So, and then as far as the Santa and, and tree lighting, it'll be our first. So it's going to be, I think I'd like to do it every December 1st, even if it's on a Tuesday or a Friday.
Well, I like the idea.
Whatever day, because everybody, you know, every, like, when they say it's the first weekend of December, those days, and people just kind of get, oh, I forgot, I didn't realize it was this weekend, you know. So if you just say December 1st, and it doesn't have to be a big deal or whatever, but this one, I think I want it to be as big of a deal as possible, because it is our first. And, and I have a wonderful Santa. Oh, you guys, he's so awesome. Oh, he's so awesome. So really looking forward to that. And we had a meeting today, and I've got the way I'm going to have it all laid out and what I'd like to have there. And then I think it's going to be pretty cool. So I'm really looking forward to it, to be honest with you.
Let me ask you a question
Okay.
concerning the Christmas tree lighting. For us living here, I'm going to make an assumption that most of our residents that have high school age kids attend Rockwall Heath High School, probably.
Yes, yes.
I went to a veterans thing in Rockwall last week, last Thursday, and I saw a group of kids that totally blew me out of the water, that sing acapella.
Really?
I saw them again last night at a veterans ceremony at the Republican Women's Dinner.
Yeah, it was Rockwall Heath Acappella Choir.
Okay, it was from Rockwall Heath?
Yeah.
I think if they're available, they would be awesome to come do some Christmas carols with us on that day.
So the Rockwall Heath?
Yeah, Rockwall Heath Acappella Choir.
Those kids did a rendition last night of every military branch's hymn that could put you into your ears. They were so
Because I would like to have a choir, and that, if you could vouch for them, then I wouldn't mind.
I thought they were outstanding, and I've heard them twice now. And they just, they were very moving in both performances. And it wasn't that many kids, what, maybe
10?
I'd say 15.
10, 15. But they were just beautiful voices.
Okay. Well, I will try to get ahold of them and see if I can get that done. Because that's on my list of things to get is a choir. Okay, thank you.
William, you have anything?
No, sir.
All right. Well, guys, it is 8:57 PM, and seeing as that we have completed everything on the agenda for this evening.